Welcome you all to the Thursday, June 11th, 2020 meeting of the Bellingham Planning Board. First on the agenda, Jim, is the continuation of the public area for Bellingham Shores, major residential development, special permit to fit him subdivision and stormwater management plan. You tell us what you want to object to this for tonight, Jim?
So at the last meeting, we've, we requested the applicant modify. The plan said slightly to start addressing some of the concerns we've had in terms of phasing, erosion control, construction management, et cetera. And, and they were to be in front of conservation as of last night, which went well. I was, I was, I followed that along that meeting. And then from there, this evening, we were hoping to tackle those concerns from the last meeting as well as traffic impacts. And I know Bill Paley, our engineer from BSC is in attendance as well. That can certainly assist us. And I believe the applicant has a brief presentation they would like to prepare for us.
That's fine.
Yes.
Sean, I'll give you the ability here.
Okay.
There you are.
Okay, can everybody see my screen here?
They can.
Okay, great. Thank you. Good to see you all again. Sean Malone, O'Consulting Group, the civil engineer for the project. With me tonight is also Kim Hasabarian, our traffic engineer. And I believe Jeff Roloff's the applicant's attorneys onboard as well. What I'd like to do is just very briefly give a recap of what's occurred in the last few weeks since we last met, and then we can dive into the, the traffic. So on April, in April, 2020, we submitted revised project docs, a response to the BSC comments we had received at the time. We received the second round of comments from BSC in May. We met with this board on May 14th. On May 29th, we submitted an updated package with some revised plans and additional information in response to the BSC comments. The board at the May 14th meeting had asked us to do some field staking of the MRD buffer lines, both the 100 foot and the 75 foot that we were proposing in some areas, as well as the entrance locations and the limit of work. That was completed on June 3rd. My understanding is some, if not all of the board members were able to get out to the site to look at the stakes last week. Yesterday, we submitted electronically via PDF draft SWIP, Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan for the construction phase of the project. We met when, hard copies of that SWIP will be forthcoming. You'll all receive a copy of that. We met with the Conservation Commission last night. As Jim mentioned, we felt it went well. The Conservation Commission is doing a site walk next Tuesday, and we are continuing to the 24th. And that brings us to tonight. Our May 29th submittal package, just get everybody tuned in on what that was. We had a letter from, from me in response to the BSC comments and the planning board comments that we received on the, the 14th. Revised site plan sheets, revised phasing plan, supplemental traffic memo from Kim at TAP to address the BSC comments, revised environmental analysis and updated pollution prevention and stormwater operation, operation and maintenance plan in response to the BSC comments, as well as an updated isolated wetlands replication plan. One of the comments that we heard from this board in May was regarding the phasing and a concern that the phases shown were, were a little too big. At the time, we proposed three phases. We've gone back and taken another look at that, and we've developed this plan dividing the project into five phases. I'll get into that very briefly in a little bit. But additional conversations with Jim we've had, there was concern about construction entrance off of Cross Street, since that would have to be the first phase, since that's where we're tying into the utilities. So we will be updating this plan to show a Phase 1 construction entrance from Center Street. And this area is the area where we're going to be extending our sewer line so that the town can connect to it at a future date. So we'd have a temporary construction entrance here to be able to lead into the rest of the phase of the project. We'll also be clarifying in our sequencing that a town inspection and confirmation of a given phase, that the phase is stabilized, stabilized will be required prior to starting a subsequent phase. So very briefly in going through the, the phases, again, this Phase 1 is this green area that's unchanged since we, we talked last. Again, we need to start here because this is where we're tying into the town sewer and water. So we bring it into the site and then extend it in the back portion of the site. This pink area would be Phase 2. So by the completion of Phase 1 and Phase 2, the stormwater basins will be complete and stabilized, be able to support the remainder of the project. We then continue the project out to South Main Street to be able to create the second connection. And at that point, we'd be able to abandon this temporary construction access and use the South Main Street access. And then the final two phases would be the southernmost portions of the project shown in the yellow and the purple. This is just a quick screenshot of some of the information that's shown on our phasing plan. I won't go through it all, but we have some detailed information on what would be required for temporary sedimentation, de-watering, stockpiling, in general, site maintenance and land clearing and grading to be able to control any potential erosion and have a good clean site. This is all will be backed up by the, the SWIP as well. We talked a little bit about the perimeter buffer. And as you recall, we were proposing a reduction of the 100 foot buffer in three locations over here and in the center portion of the site here and over in this far right hand area. We're proposing that the buffer be reduced to 75 feet. In talking to Jim, we also had this area here is 75 feet. In talking to Jim and looking at this a little bit more, we see that we could extend this portion here to the full 100 foot buffer. In these locations behind units 42 to 43 and 46 to 58, we would propose a split rail fence to help delineate that land and the separation between in owner's land and the buffer, which would be deeded open space. This fence would also have the monuments indicating that it is a boundary and beyond it is deeded open space conservation area. Over in this area, what we're proposing is enhancement of the, the buffer. Currently, there's not a lot there in some places. So we would repair that. We would create a, a buffer in that 75 foot zone with new trees and plantings to, to fill that area in. And again, this whole buffer would be deeded open space, deeded to the town. So it'd be protected in perpetuity. At this point, that's all I have for the updates on the, the site and what we've done with that. I guess, Mr. Chairman, I would ask you, do you want to hear from your consultant first? Or if you would like, Kim can go through and re-present what he presented previously.
If you could give us a quick overview of what he presented previously and the presentation. At that point, we can keep the questions until the end to make it run a little smoother.
Okay, great. Kim, do you want to take it away?
Okay, can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, good. I'm Kim Hasabarian, a traffic engineer at TAP LLC. I'll very quickly go over the, the content of the Traffic Impact and Access Study. The Traffic Impact and Access Study was a, a full study done in accordance with typical practice in Massachusetts. And we looked at the weekday AM and PM peak hours under the 2020 existing conditions, 2027 no build conditions, as with background traffic growth, but without the project's traffic. And 2027 build conditions, that adds the, the site's traffic onto the volume networks. We looked at the following intersections. Along South Main Street, we looked at the Blackstone Street intersection, the Easy Street intersection, Douglas Drive, Glenbrook Avenue, which will have a, a site access point across from our Glenbrook and Center Street. In addition, we looked at the Center Street and Cross Street intersection and the Cross Street proposal intersection. The site will have access both to South Main Street and to Cross Street. There'll be two access points. We analyzed as 103 single-family detached housing units. We took traffic counts in the area when school was in session and before the pandemic. We looked at crashes or crash history in the area and ended up with below average crash rates and severities that were not, not involving fatality. In fact, we're mostly property damage only. The access points have adequate site distances at their intersections with South Main Street and Cross Street. We conducted capacity analysis of all the study area intersections using the, the standard tools. We got levels of service and essentially to sum things up. Along South Main Street, the side street approaches are subject to delay. Traffic trying to enter from, you know, Douglas, Easy, whatever, at the unsignaled access points are subject to delay without or with the project. The two intersections we analyzed along Cross Street, that's Cross and Center, and Cross and the access point had good levels of service, load delays. And the signalized intersection of Blackstone and South Main Street, the project had, had no significant impact. And in fact, we conducted a little touch up analysis in accordance with, with BSC's comment. I believe that hits the high points, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
What I'll do is hold off, get our consultant, and then ask questions.
And may I recommend that Sean, if you want to undo the share screen, then we can see each other, each other a little better.
Yes, perfect.
Kim, who are you waiting for?
Are you waiting for me?
Okay.
Yeah, Bill, show yours, Bill Paley.
Okay, so I don't know, I've got, I don't have any PowerPoint presentation. I just have the aerial map. I don't, everyone knows the project area, but I'll just, um, just go with my, my verbal comments. So, um, so the project, as you know, it's bordered by South Main Street to the north, Center Street to the, to the west, and Cross Street to the south. We were asked by the town to conduct a peer review of the TIS. And so we did that initially. We offered some comments and we provided those to the consultant. And then they provide a supplemental, which we really appreciate. I asked five or six questions or clarifications, and then we were able to get those comments recently. So I'm going to kind of go through those briefly tonight. So just first off, as Kim had mentioned, the consultant utilized the latest IT standards and protocols and practices. I think, you know, we agree with the trip generation, the methodology, the approach. The accident data was current. The traffic information was current. Actually, you know, someone had brought up the question last month about, you know, do you want to redo counts? And, and I agree with Kim that we want to keep the whole counts because there's, there was more traffic before than there is now. So I think we, we want to use the, the worst case scenario. And then, so then we, all that information, I think, you know, we agree with. It's a good approach. And some of the questions that are raised, also the use of Syncro, you know, the, the latest version of Syncro, the analysis was clear, was concise. I agree with the no build, the build, the years that, you know, they used, they're using a seven year build out. Could have gone to a 15 year, but seven years is fine. And I, I think it was just overall, it was simple, adequate, and it, it told the story. So some of the questions that we asked was, the first one was to clarify. So the intersections that, that Kim mentioned were appropriate. I'd asked a question about North Street and South Main Street to include that. Now, why wasn't that included? I'm basically happy with your response. You provided some information, the number of trips coming from that direction, not necessarily North Street. You know, there are four trips in the morning coming from the west, 17 coming from, during the PM period. So I know they're not all coming from North Street, but it does give a better sense of what's coming from that direction. The reason why I brought that up, North Street, is I know that the impact on that intersection is probably minimal. However, I just, I was concerned about traffic coming out of Center Street. They want to get to the north. Now they're, although, I let traffic is coming out, taking a left and taking a right into North Street. You know, how is this project impacting that intersection? Whether it's a minimal impact or not, that's, that's really why I raised that question. I didn't have any evidence that there was a level service drop or so forth. But I'm happy with your response, Kim, on that. And I was just raising the question to make sure that you as a consultant in the town are aware that, you know, folks are going to use Center Street, they are going to take a left if they can't come out of the main entrance, and they're, they're going to use North Street. So that was, that was really basically my comment on that. The 2027 build numbers on the site, you know, you provided numbers in the morning and the afternoon for vehicles and, you know, leaving the site on South Main Street. And I posed the question, you know, is there justification to look at? There's going to be, there may be some queuing inside the site during the AM, PM period, depending on the day of the week and so forth. You know, are folks going to now navigate to Cross Street? Because there's a queue coming onto South Main. Are they going to navigate to Cross Street or figure out a way to, to get out of the site? So that means they're going to come to Cross Street, take a right, come to Center Street, to South Main, take a left if they want to go west. So I was just raising the question if, you know, not asking to reallocate, but just consider, you know, what would be the impact if, you know, in reality, folks may end up doing that? So I wasn't questioning the volume or the distribution, just to consider that you get two access points. And naturally, you know, if I was living there and I had an issue in the morning trying to take a left on a South Main, I'm going to navigate to Cross and to Center. And now, so now it's no longer an issue inside the site. Now you've put traffic on a different street. And so that becomes an issue maybe at Center Street. Contrasting that, Kim also did the analysis for signalized and non-unsignalized at Center and South, and that was very helpful because then you could look at, okay, so if we're going to assume that we're going to signalize that intersection, this is what the level service is. If you leave it alone, this is what the service is and so forth. So again, I'm, I'm okay with the response, but I was really just raising the question that, you know, I'm realist and folks are going to navigate one way or the other to try to get in and out of that site. Not everyone's going to stick to South Main Street is my point. So, um, the other question I had was delays. The 227 build numbers, again, they would impact queuing on the property, as I said. And well, actually, I'm sorry, just answered that question. But so the other question that we had was exploring, exploring the timing at the intersection of Main and Blackstone. And just because all this traffic is now going to be heading east, and so will it be, you know, adjustments to the segment timing? And Kim provided a, a synchro analysis with some timing adjustments, which is kind of what we want to have anyway, is in your back pocket. So as the project develops, and this is going to develop in phases, you may not need to make any adjustments for a year, but then after that, you may need to go into the cabinet, make some adjustments, which is, which is fine. That's, that's, I think that's adequate. So the other question we had was just the intersection of Center and South Main. And I'm not too concerned with Cross and Center because of the distance it is away from South Main. I think folks, most folks are going to be taking a right onto Center. So Kim provided an analysis to look at unsignalized at Center and South Main and signalized at Center and South Main. So when I look at the numbers for that, we looked at unsignalized 2020. If we don't do anything right now with the level services, South Main Street has a level service B right now. And A in the afternoon, which is what you would expect because it's free flow. Center Street is under stop control. I was more curious about what happens. Well, right now, Center Street is experiencing level service F and E, depending if you're taking a right or going through or taking a left. And then it's experiencing an F and a B in the afternoon, which is what you would expect. You know, that's the minor road and South Main Street's free flow. So when you go to unsignalized in 2027, this is my point is, and I think Kim, you know, you would agree, is the level of service, if you don't signalize that intersection in 2027, increase in volume. South Main Street still remains at level service B, which is what you would expect. What's interesting is the level service in Center Street remains the same in the morning, and then also gets a little better in the afternoon. So if you don't signalize it seven years from now with the build out, it's, there really isn't a huge impact to the intersection delay. And that was kind of answering my question is, if all that traffic tends to go now Cross Street, or a majority goes Cross Street to Center Street, you're really not going to experience a huge impact to that intersection. You're still going to get the same amount of queues and so forth, folks taking a left or, or right onto South Main. What's also interesting is if you signalize an intersection, the level service for South Main in the future build out goes to a B and an A. So it's really not that much of a, 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 a detraction to that intersection or a loss in level of service. But there's a huge impact to Center Street flow, obviously because it's signalized. And it goes, you know, from, from F to an E in the morning to a B, C in the afternoon, in the morning, and then to a B in the afternoon. So, you know, it's, there's a trade off here. But I think by not signalizing it, it stays pretty much the same. But, you know, if the town had to go ahead and signalize that intersection, it would be a huge impact and positive impact to the, to the flow of traffic on Center Street.
And, and Bill, I just want to touch on that one. So that, that is something that we, you know, we certainly want to see done. That was, that wasn't part of Bellingham Shores, but I think at the last meeting, we touched on it a little bit. It's a part of the mitigation for Lakeview Estates, and it's the, as the same applicant and in the same neighborhood, I think it's, uh, it's going to be important for the, the board to, you know, make sure that those conditions are, are put in there.
Yeah, so, but that was, that was my observation on that. Other than that, those are, I mean, I think my comments have been addressed by that supplemental memo. And, um, you know, again, I, I, my concerns really were focused on how traffic is going to impact or enter and exit the site. It's not just going to be South Main, it's going to be Cross to Center. And I wanted to make sure that the consultant or the, the proponent in the town are aware of that reality. But it appears based on the analysis that the impact is minimal. There will be some impact. There's always going to be an impact. I think that was mentioned at the last board meeting. But I agree that it's not going to be such a, such an impact where you're going to have gridlock on Cross Street or gridlock on Center. I think it's really going to be similar to what it is today. But as, you know, as the thing gets built out, you may want to be looking at that. And I'm glad that, that the town has taken steps to prepare for signalization at Center and South Main. I mean, there were times during the day where you wish you had a signal there to let people out. And then also just the fact that you've got two, two access points to the site is huge. Because you may have an issue on South Main Street, not just normal traffic, but some other issue. And it's, it's always good to have that secondary access point. So anyway, those are my comments. Happy to answer any, any questions by anyone.
What I'd like to do is start with the, the board for questions. Are there any other presentations that you, people represented some afterward need to make this evening?
Nope, that's, that's everything we have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Brian, you have any questions?
Yeah, thank you. With regard to traffic, my concern is not necessarily Cross to Center. It's, it's Cross to Lake Street. Because I think people that move there will quickly, quickly realize that that is the shortest way to 495 and circumvents 126 altogether. And Cross Street is, as you know, very narrow, sort of winding. Did you happen to look at the effect at that intersection? So I, I do believe that the majority of people will learn quickly that that is the best exit out of the site.
Brian, that's also the easiest way to the commuter rail. So if any residents take the commuter rail from Franklin, that's the fastest way as well.
Okay, is that, I'm assuming I should be answering the question, although the review consultant certainly weigh in. The way we developed the trip distribution was we used Journey to Work data for the overall towns that people are going to when they enter or leave the development. And then we used internet-based routing. We basically asked for travel directions to get the routing. Now that being said, the project generates rough numbers. 100 vehicle trips during the peak hour, a little more in the morning and a little bit less, and a little bit less in the morning and a little bit more in the afternoon. And let's say we assigned 20 more vehicles out of that to, to the Cross Street access and took them away from South Main. Well, let's forget about South Main and focus on Cross. Those 20 vehicles in an hour work out to one vehicle every, every three minutes. And those vehicles are going to be split by direction, kind of eastbound versus westbound. And they're going to be split either side of the access point. Some will be more toward the center side and some will be more toward the lakeside. And, and those numbers get to be really small numbers. So even if traffic goes via Cross, the numbers aren't going to be sufficient to cause what I'd call a percent. what I'd call a perceptible impact. It's, they're small numbers. And I'd be happy to answer any, any follow on to that.
Well, Kim, have you traveled down cross-street to Lake Street? Are you familiar with that particular stretch of road?
Yes, I have.
So it's very narrow, it's very wooded. And then as it comes out to Lake Street, that's also very narrow and twisty and and so what's going to happen is people are going to take a left out of cross. They're going to go to Lake Street and they're going to take a left there. And then they're going to take a left on South Maple to get to 495. And all of those choke points are sort of well-known shortcuts in the area and not conducive to a lot of traffic. A lot of people that it's a winding road. So a lot of people speed in those areas. I was curious that if I would say a majority of those people leave the, leave the, the site and take that path, which I think most will, and they'd probably take the reverse path coming home if they, if they work out of the town. Because I don't believe anybody would leave the site on cross to get to Center because you're just stuck in the same traffic that you would be going on 126. So I just wanted to make sure that we carefully look at. We have a really good estimate of assuming the worst case scenario, that these people are traveling in that direction, that those roadways have the capacity to take on that additional traffic. And if, if there's sightlines problems and other things like that, that we be mindful of that because I certainly don't want to aggravate an existing problem. And down in that area where the lake is, particularly in the summertime, there's a lot of kids, a lot of families, a lot of people moving about. So just want to make sure that that is adequately addressed in our analysis.
May I add to that real quick? So Brian brought up a good point about sightline. So even if I understand, Kim, you looked at the volumes and it may not reach a level that of your concern. But the sightline at Lake and South Maple, if truly, as Brian's mentioning, most of the volume would go in that direction. I would, I would ask that maybe you take a close look at that sightline there. That is a, the difficult intersection. I don't know if there's any, you know, small improvements that might be able to be made there to improve sightlines if truly the volume's going in that direction.
That's a tough left over there. It is. I used to take it every day.
And my only other question would be with regard to the phasing, is there, is there, what's the math or the underlying rationale with regards to, I appreciate that you further divided the phasing. I'm just trying to understand the, the logic of each phase, if you don't mind explaining.
Yeah, so let me just click back here for a second. So we need to, we need to have kind of enough work to do in a phase to support the phase, if you would. So what we've divided this into is kind of five somewhat equal areas to limit the disturbance as well as do a logical construction sequence. So, you know, I think as far as the numbers go, it's, it's kind of more of a, a logic thing. It isn't based on so many lots need to be done in a phase or, or anything like that. It's, we want to get the infrastructure tied into the town's infrastructure to be able to build off of. We want to get the stormwater infrastructure done and set, which would be done in the first two phases, and then be able to continue out, make a connection to South Main Street as part of the third phase. And then go back and infill the, the southern portion of the site in, in the last two phases. So that, that's, that's kind of the methodology that we're using.
Is, is there, like, I believe it's phase three, it's slightly larger than the other phases? I don't have it in front of me.
I think you're correct. It, it is slightly larger. And the reason being is just kind of the, the roadway is where the roadways intersect. Want to be able to have that road continuous all the way out to South Main Street. So we really bring it to that intersection that we have there. And then it starts right where the access to the pond one is. So it, it, it was kind of a logical break on, on where it is.
Okay, thank you.
And, and the only other thing, Mr. Salisbury, I'll note on this with, with this layout, this is kind of a, it's a linear phase and in linear progression rather than you have a, a, a big site plan where you just go in clear cut. So in the construction for most of these phases, it's, it's, it's a pathway. So I think that, that'll help some of the concerns, I think, with the erosion control and, and things like that.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, did you just say me, Bill?
Yes.
Okay. Just to follow on to that, on, on the phasing, Sean, you used the word stabilized when a phase was stabilized. And I was just wanting, just a little bit more definition on what you meant by stabilized.
Sure, yeah. Stabilized, that would typically be no exposed soils. So typically it would be an 80% grass coverage, vegetated coverage of any loamed areas, not roadway. And then binder coat or sometimes hard gravel for the, for the roadway. So the idea that we wouldn't have erosive materials in a, in a big rainfall that would get washed away.
And I assume that also means that the faces, the houses are done or rebuilt.
No, and, and I want to, I want to be clear about that. And so the, the phase that we're proposing and we're, we're demonstrating is for the site construction. This is a definitive subdivision. These lots may be sold à la carte. They may be developed by Pafford. So the houses may not be constructed in a given phase. You know, all of phase one houses may not be constructed before phase two, et cetera, et cetera. But the important thing is that the, the land that had been disturbed has been stabilized and is not erosive.
I'd just ask for a follow-up question on that point.
Brian, can we hold on for a minute?
Sure.
Do you have any other questions?
I just had one about, to Bill Paley about the traffic again. It was just around, if there's a signal at, at, at Center and, at Center and South Main, doesn't that also just put more cars on cross-street? Or did you, I, I don't think you mentioned that point. I was listening pretty closely. But doesn't it just put more cars on cross-street?
Well, I mean, it, not necessarily. I mean, it does, it, it makes it just easier to for traffic on Center to exit onto South Main. You know, signals, if you build it, they will come. It still applies. I, I think that's what you're, you're getting at. I don't think signals are really needed on day one. I, I think, you know, Brian brought up a good point with regard to Lake. You know, folks are going to navigate the other way as well to get to 495. So I, I think this is a situation where it's probably going to work without a signal at Center for a number of years until it gets built out. But I, I think that, you know, over time, as, as growth comes to the area, then maybe a need to signalize an intersection. But I, I mean, I don't know if I agree with it. It's going to bring more folks there necessarily. It's just going to make it easier to get, take a left into that intersection onto Center. You know, during the afternoon peak when people are coming home. It'll make it easy to take a left out in the morning and so forth.
My theory was that light could get backed up to, couldn't that light get backed up to the entrance to the development? Is it called Glenbrook? Could get backed up to there where it could be difficult to take a left. So you would go out the other way.
Right. Yeah. And I, I think, you know, putting signals at Center and South Main, I, I think we have to just be careful with it. And I think if, you know, it's, I think your question was, was relying, if someone's, if folks are queuing up on South Main to take a left into Center, is it going to block the entrance to the development? Right? Is that your concern?
Yeah, that was kind of it. And then you're just going the other way anyway, right?
Right, right. I, I don't see that happening. I mean, I saw the, I mean, I saw the, the traffic analysis and I don't think you're going to get queues like that for folks taking a left onto Center. But I mean, there's always that concern.
I understand.
Yeah.
Brian, you have another question?
That was all I had. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Bill. Just a follow-up question, it's more directed to Jim. Jim, do we, in the past, I seem to remember that phasing is tied to occupancy permits.
Yep. So we have in, in the past done tied to occupancy permits. So, you know, I think we need to look at this closely, the phasing plan. I did speak with Sean earlier about ratcheting up the language in that phasing plan. You know, one of the critical things that we've seen in the past is, is making sure that the earth is stabilized, as Sean mentioned. And then making sure that the next phase is properly absolutely fortified and putting up the silt barriers before, you know, clear cutting the, the next phase. So and, and also making sure that all the central infrastructure is completed and, and thoroughly defining, you know, what is central infrastructure is. Because I know we've, we truly had some difficulties with past projects with that language. But you're right, Brian. In the past, you know, we have talked about finishing up ex-occupancy permits before moving on to the next.
Brian, can you interject for a minute? Ideally, I'd like to keep the discussion to traffic. I think phasing is going to be an issue that we want to get a lot more input on, other than what was provided tonight by the applicant. I know you just alluded to some, Jim just alluded to some. I think we're going to button that up as best we can. Extreme it to everyone understands, including the public, what phasing will be when we go from one session to another. I think that could be a lengthy discussion at a future meeting. I just don't want to gloss over it this evening because I didn't think it is going to be an important discussion.
I have no other questions.
But Jim, I think we need to, they need to articulate a lot more. We need to let them know what we think. But I think, you know, we need more input from the public when we discuss phasing. Phil, do you have any questions?
Me?
Yes.
Phil Devine.
Yeah, no, I don't have any new questions that haven't already been asked tonight.
Liz?
My one question was about Lake Street and Brian pretty much covered that. So I don't have any further questions.
I have several questions. Someone mentioned your buildout. Will you need a clarification of what that means in regards to traffic and buildup of the development? I also want to address in a future meeting, a clarification of what stabilizing means for each phase. In addition, as we go through this project, you had mentioned that at some point you want construction vehicles entering on South Main Street into the development. Is that correct on your map?
Yes.
What I'd like to say is during the construction period, I would like you to utilize what you're going to for an access to the development from Center Street as opposed to cross. I like to see that used as much as possible. I would like to limit traffic to the houses that have just been built, that just occupied during future construction and future phases. So if you can revisit that, I would think that would be particularly appreciated. I also think you have been told about the our feeling on the buffer. As we move forward, I think the buffer, in addition to phasing, is something we want to get the public involved in on. I don't think it's appropriate to have this discussion simply on a Zoom meeting. So I think at a future meeting, you may want to be prepared to outline what your, your version of stabilization of phasing would be. And then addressing long-term use of access to the development for what you'll be building on Center Street. I, I think the neighbors on cross-street will greatly appreciate the fact that you're putting the construction vehicles on Center Street and not running down cross-street. I, I think that's a, a big gain since our last presentation. And I think we also, I think the numbers as Brian, I was going to do it, and Russ, I think as these people come in, these people are going to be most likely commuters. I believe either on training or via 495. Once they move in, they'll talk to their neighbors. And they will probably find out that the best way with traffic is going to be cross to Lake to South Maple. So I think that's something we have to look at in regards to volume. And I do believe it will be more than one car every three minutes in the morning and the afternoon. And also we need to factor in, in the wintertime, those streets become much, much more narrow, especially late, but more so on cross-street. So those are the only questions and comments I have. Jim, is there anything else we need to discuss other than a future meeting?
Not, not for this evening. I think you guys provided a lot of good input to the applicant to get rolling. I have a few notes here. So I believe Sean's going to be updating the phasing plan, ratcheting that up some with some more language. We're going to be ongoing with the stormwater review. I know Frank's going to continue on with that review conservation. I took a look, a little bit of it last night, but they're going to be looking at it in the coming weeks. And just looking down the bylaws here. So one of the comments was for traffic management. I know we talked about truck management. There's a lot of Phil coming into the site. Bill, you alluded to the, the fact of construction entrance locations. I think we want to see a draft truck management plan. That's typically how the board wants, likes to see a condition of, sure, a final plan, but we certainly want to be able to provide input and guidance in terms of a draft plan. Some other, the small things that, you know, we haven't quite touched on yet, but at a future meeting, Bill. The affordable components, I know we glossed over that a while back now, talking about the affordability aspects of it. One thing that we learned obviously from past projects is that we, we need to mandate sternly that, you know, those affordables are similar to that of the market rate. So, you know, we can certainly talk to that in a future meeting. School impacts, we haven't really touched on yet. I don't believe the Afghan has provided much in, in regards to that either.
And that could impact traffic as well, vehicle trips.
Yep.
Kids.
Yep. Yeah, exactly right.
And Jim, just to pick up, I apologize for holding on on comments from the public. In regards to the affordable portion, I think you mentioned that from the outside, they're going to look very similar. You should not be able to drive by any of those houses and be able to tell when you drive by, what is affordable and what is market value.
Right. And that's correct. And that's DHDD's requirements. However, we've, we've found in past projects that unless you strictly mandated locally, there is very little enforcement at the state level. So I think it's important for us to, you know, ratchet that up.
You'll be able to look at when they propose a certain square footage, that, that's actually done. Another thing I think we want to look at, and I know it'll be discussion for later, with regard to affordability, is I think we want to look at a certain percentage of affordable houses. Or maybe overall, about having some of them first floor accessible, back bathrooms as people get older. I don't know if that's something Frappin is looking at, but that, I think that's something we may want to pursue as we go through this process. I'd like to open it to the public, if anyone has any questions. And also, before I, my goal is to have an open meeting as soon as possible.
So if you're in the public and you wish to comment, you can either unmute yourself, uh, state your name and address, or you can raise your hand and I'll unmute you. Um, I'm not seeing any, Bill.
Paul, Paul had to stand up.
Nope.
Yeah, I, um, excuse me, I got a couple, a couple of questions for the traffic people. What I did not hear, I'll, I'll grant you that it's, it's, you can't do a traffic, traffic study right now. Um, it's just not possible with what's going on. But also, the current traffic study that you're basing it on, the physical study, was done before the schools went to their new method of dropping off kids and picking up kids. Now, I don't know whether either one of you gentlemen have tried to leave Easy Street, Center Street, or Douglas Drive in the morning, when the schools are dropping off kids at the middle school. It is not two or three cars of, every three minutes. It's a fifteen, twenty-minute wait to get from Douglas to the light. It is backed up. And those, and when, when the kids get out, especially the high school, Blackstone Street is totally backed up. Most of them turn left up towards your project, some turn right. Were those traffics that, how, how could you even capture those statistics? They weren't available then when you did the thing, when you did the physical study.
I'll ask him to look. No, that's a good point, Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you for your question.
Phil, um, I believe, uh, Mark McNamara may have had a question?
Yes, I saw this. Mr. McNamara? Can you unmute him, Jim?
I sent him a request to be unmuted.
Okay. Mr. McNamara?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can.
Okay, you know, I just have a couple of questions regarding the traffic. Um, you, Center Street and Cross Street, there's no crosswalk, uh, currently on those roads now. And you're talking about adding more traffic and how that would affect, um, those roads in particular. Secondly, when, um, they, you, somebody mentioned earlier about traffic coming in and out of the construction site. I do suggest that you, you ask the, the builder to be specific when you say, "We want more traffic come out of one particular road." I would give it a percentage, because, uh, I am currently at the Brian Road, uh, project, and, um, the traffic here on this road is, is, um, quite extensive. So when we ask the builder, uh, on these sites, I would hope that we ask them specifics when it comes to how much traffic comes in and out of a specific road.
Um, that, that's a great point, Mr. McNamara. What my objective was, was I would like to try to keep as much construction vehicles off of Cross Street during construction as possible, due to the confines that we have right now physically with Cross Street. And prior to tonight's presentation, we were going to ask them to look into accessing it from Center Street. But that is something we can look at, sir. And please continue to come to future meetings if you feel that needs to be addressed.
Uh, thank you. And then, and then I will ask, um, um, I, I think it was mentioned earlier by Mr. Burnett. Um, so I, I, I access South Main Street off of Easy Street, and currently the traffic now, because of, of what's happening with COVID, is, is obviously quite, um, less significant. But during regular business, that road is, is, um, is very difficult during the morning work hours and late, uh, late day hours. And I'm just a little bit baffled on how we can be adding more housing and not have any significant impact, um, to the road. And I think Mr., uh, Hazavati had mentioned traffic lights. I, I, I'm baffled how we're going to magically change the traffic flow with all this new building. And we're just talking about Bellingham now. We're not talking about what's happening on Salk and all the access that, that comes up the one main road in this town, which is 126. How, um, how a traffic light in the future is going to mitigate the traffic that we now experience? So, um, I, I, I'm, I'm kind of confused on, on, on that aspect.
So what we will do is, uh, we will bring out traffic at a public meeting. We get input from the public. This will not be the last time traffic mitigation will be discussed. I think Jim will give, um, both, uh, Kim and, um, our consultant, uh, some questions to address, and Kim and Bill, so we can look at that. Um, I think Brian, in the past, has said, and this is my experience on the board, Brian, every time they see no, it's fair to say they underestimate.
I think it's fair to say that we've never had a project before us where it was ever anticipated to have any significant impacts.
And they have had impact, correct?
Yes.
So I think that's something we want to look at. And that's why, again, I probably said it three times, if not four times. Uh, a lot of this I want to have out in the public as quickly as possible.
Well, I appreciate the platform, and I, and I hope that the town, uh, pursues this, uh, more in depth, because I think what we've heard tonight is not, uh, a definitive answer on what we're looking for as residents. Um, so I, I plan on attending in the future, and I appreciate what the town, um, has done. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. And please come to future meetings. Jim, what else?
It looks like that's it for public comment. Um, so certainly, you know, there's a number of things to address, so, um, we would need a, a continuation to a date certain.
Oh, I'd like to offer, um, a, a couple of things. And I noticed Dennis is there, so I may ask with this input. I'm hoping that we can meet in public after July 1st. So our first meeting would be July 9th? In July?
Yes, yeah, that's correct.
I'd like to, uh, push this off, or not push it off, uh, have it, uh, continue on a July 9th meeting. With the caveat being, if we find out that, um, the state allows us, they've opened meetings as of July 1st, that we may want to see if we can switch our schedule and have this done July 2nd. Uh, but ideally, I would like to have it, um, open to the public on, um, July 9th.
So one, one prob- only problem with that is, uh, if you can, you can continue to a date certain, you can't move that date forward.
So what do, what do you recommend?
Uh, well, that's, that's a one-week difference. I think, I think if you're, if you're talking about trying to, to get it to a point where there may be an ability to meet in person, um, July 9th is probably more realistic.
Okay. Do you want to put it beyond that, or?
I, I, I think that's, that's more than adequate, so I know.
Do we need a motion on that?
Yes, please.
So, motion?
I'll move to continue the public hearing until July 9th.
Do I have a second, please?
A second.
And Jim, uh, since this involves special permits, how many of us allowed to vote?
Uh, well, so, uh, the, the main board, uh, is to vote. Uh, Liz isn't designated as, uh, a member to vote at this time, uh, but this is just a vote of continuation, so.
Okay. All in favor of the continuation, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, that motion passes unanimously. Gentlemen, we will see you on July 9th. And if I know the town planner, he'll have some information in front of you, uh, either tomorrow or by, uh, Tuesday.
Great. Well, thank you very much, all. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Paul, Mr. McNamara, and the other people in the public, thank you very much for your participation. Jim, what is next?
Just so you guys know, I got Tribino here on speakerphone.
Okay.
Uh, so, uh, the next item is, uh, re- is our Red Mill, uh, discussion. That is actually a request for a continuation also to July 9th.
Uh, do we make a motion? I believe we do.
Yes, please.
Well, I'll move to continue the public hearing until July 9th.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor of continuing the public hearing on Red Mill till July 9th, 2020, please signify by saying aye.
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 We hear from Dennis?
I think he's on, I, I think he's on the moon.
He's seconded it.
Um, that motion passes.
No, no, they heard you.
Uh, Jim, do we have any A and Rs?
No A and Rs tonight.
Uh, have we had a chance to look at the minutes?
Yep.
Yes.
Would someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Or Dennis can.
Okay, Dennis made that motion?
I'll second it.
All in favor of, uh, approving the minutes, please signify by, by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? That also passes unanimously.
Well, uh, Bill, one thing with the minutes, uh, since we're not able to, uh, sign at this moment, um, if you guys are comfortable with it, uh, Amy was going to put at the bottom of each of the minutes that it was approved at this scheduled meeting, you know, 5:0, and it's prepared by Amy Sutherland.
That's fine.
Okay, that's good. That works. And then, um, oh, so there's two, uh, general, general business items that aren't, uh, expressly stated there. So, uh, another signature is the board stipend. So if you guys are comfortable with me signing them for the moment, uh, if you just want to make a, a motion to, for me to sign those for you on your behalf.
So moved.
Second?
A second.
All in favor of having our board stipend signed, please signify by saying aye.
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 Vice Chair, do you want to oppose? Nope. That motion also passes unanimously.
And then, uh, just, uh, since this is the first meeting after our reorg, uh, sorry, after our elections, it's, uh, reorganization time.
So we need this evening to, um, determine who will be, um, Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary. Do you have any motions for, uh, Chair?
I make a motion to Chair, William O'Connell, chairman.
Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Any other motions? All in favor of nominating William O'Connell as Chair, please signify by saying aye.
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 Do you want to oppose? That passes unanimously. In regards to Vice Chair, I'd like to nominate Brian to be Vice Chair.
Second.
All in favor of having Brian, so, as Vice Chair, please signify by saying aye.
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 Also, we need to nominate a, uh, Secretary?
I'd like to nominate Russ if he's willing.
Yes.
I'll second that. Uh, all in favor of having Russ as Secretary, please signify by saying aye.
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 That motion passes. Any other business?
Can I ask Jim one question?
Yeah, go please.
Jim, can you, um, if you know, do you have an update on the solar, um, construction on Maple Street?
Yeah.
So any kind of update on the, um,
Withdrawal of subdivision?
Sorry?
The withdrawal of the subdivision? That what you're?
No, my other question was about the, um, the homes across the street from Home Depot. If there's anything new on that.
Sure. So, um, let's see. So the solar side, we had a pre-construction meeting with them maybe early last week. Uh, they have the demo permit for the house that may already be down. I haven't gone by this week, uh, to, to check, but they needed to demo the house first. There was some asbestos removal, that kind of stuff. Um, and then they, uh, were to get the permit for the, uh, site itself. Uh, so as, if, if the house is down, then they can, they have their permit at hand. I'll check again tomorrow morning. Uh, but then that starts the clock. So thirty days, uh, after that, they are to withdraw the, uh, subdivision, and they are aware of that. They've confirmed that that is what the intention is, and, uh, and our town council is well aware of it as well.
So contract might have been out on, uh, social media. That project is still ongoing.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. We went over step-by-step what the construction activity was. They're working on a schedule for us. We have our town council finalizing a decommissioning agreement. Uh, yeah, it's, it's a full go, it seems like.
Tremendous.
Um, and then in terms of the houses across from Home Depot, no real, uh, news. I met with, um, their engineers, uh, the, the representative, uh, for, uh, the owner, uh, just, they wanted to bounce ideas, but there were no fresh ideas, so there wasn't much of a conversation. It was more the same. So, uh, we're somewhat at stalemate at the moment, that, no real new news.
And again, Jim, it appears that, um, although I am not active on social media, with my lack of, uh, not the best tactics in the world, I understand there's a lot of activity on social media in regards to that development.
Oh, I'm sure. Yeah, I mean, it's highly visible, yeah.
And, you know, I, I think for the public, you know, the, the only place to get accurate information is from this board. And if you could just update, uh, update us periodically on both those projects, it would be greatly appreciated for the public.
Yeah, of course.
But Jim, when we say that it's a stalemate, I mean, stalemate about what?
Well, I, maybe, maybe that's a little too far. It's, it's that he has exactly what he has there right now and, and nothing further. He has three single-family houses. Uh, the gentleman who owns it wants, you know, not to have this, see, three single-family houses. He wants something else. Uh, and there's really no path to get to that point at this moment.
Right, that was my understanding as well.
Yeah.
So, yeah, he's, um, kind of say locked in right now in the current situation. So, uh, uh, since, you know, it is what it is right now. I hate to use that expression. But it is.
Other than that, I mean, construction around town is going well. Um, I don't know if anyone's seen the, the Lincoln property recently. Uh, they are going to town on that, that road there, and, uh, that's a, that's a big haul. And, you know, I, I've gotten almost no complaints at all about that construction site. It's, uh, they, they did, uh, they're doing a really, a top-notch job in terms of controlling the site with such a, a difficult, uh, situation. So, uh, that's going well. All the other ones, you know, are, are moving along just fine. We're wrapping up a number of them, actually. Uh, if you, at the back of your brains, you probably remember Pine Hollow, uh, Hartford Village, all these ones are, are wrapping up, where we're pretty much done with, with all of them. We've been reviewing them, monitoring them for the last two, three years, and, uh, and they're coming out rather nice.
I know a lot of people still want to, um, stay at home, but if I could encourage the board members to drive by Lincoln properties from both directions on 140. Uh, it is impressive what they've done. Uh, is Dennis, can Dennis hear me?
No, I can't.
What, what, you're, you're pretty impressed by the amount of drilling they've done, correct?
Uh, that's passive, that cost the authorities to do what they did. I've never seen a company like that since 495 was put in.
So if you have an opportunity, it's impressive what they have done. Obviously, the, the house is gone, um, but i- it's impressive. And at some point, uh, down the road. And at some point, Jim, down the road, people want to take a tour, you know, of that site?
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely. I can take you, take you tomorrow, that's good. But yeah, absolutely. If you guys want to go on site, just let me know. I can definitely set that up.
Jim, with regard to that house that they knocked down, that wasn't part of the plan, right?
And it's not Lincoln who knocked it down either. No, that, yeah, no, someone else purchased that, well, purchased it from the, the woman, Virginia, who moved on. And, and so that was coming down as a safety issue. They wanted to get it down actually before the blasting, but ended up not doing that. Left it up for the fire department to, to do some training in. And so, yeah, so that, it was nice of them to do that. We did have some concern about the grading though, that is taking place without any real review. So we've talked to them about securing the site at minimum at this time until we can get them before the proper boards. But they need to, you know, some engineering. We don't, you know, just want them to just go to town, so.
What, you know what the plan is for that lot?
There's no real plan yet. That's the real difficult position that we're, they're in right now. They, they want to bring something forward, but they don't have real. I think what they're honestly, in my discussions with them, I think they're waiting for Lincoln to kind of button up that road. Because right now, you look at it and you say, I don't, I don't want to get involved in that, that mess right there. But I think once the final product's shown there, I think it would be, it's probably going to be a, a smart investment for that corner. It's a corner lot essentially at that point. It is its own business too, I believe, at that spot too, so.
In my mind, I imagine there's more buffering on that side, but I think that had to do with the house, right?
Right, yeah, that was on their property. But I will say though, you know, us looking up the, the new road, you can see the building. But if you're standing in front of Antron, you can't see that building. I think you guys did a great job about setting that back and keeping the buffer right there. You can't see it at all.
Yeah.
And just to remind the board, although the house may be gone, the two street names are going to live in perpetuity.
That's right.
Jim, has Lincoln mentioned any potential tenants for that building yet?
Uh, no. And every time I ask, they, they don't quite, they won't give me enough clues for me to piece it together just yet. I'll get there though, I'll let you know as soon as I.
I'll see, I'll see what I can find out. I talked to somebody, I know someone there at Lincoln said that they're, we're a little slow the last couple of months in terms of tours. Couldn't get people out there for whatever reason. They were afraid to go, couldn't travel, that kind of thing. But I'll see if I can find out tomorrow. I'm going to talk to them again, so.
Yeah, that would, that would be interesting. I, yeah, I've been, I've been, every time I talk to them, I try and poke them a little bit to get a little more information. But nothing yet.
And Flanders to Lincoln, they have a deadline where they want to have it sewn in.
That's right, yeah. No, they've been committed to November, the first of November deadline. And in talking with their construction crew, they're ahead of schedule. So, yeah, that's, that's the game plan, at least it sounds like.
Listen, based on that, I think they know who it is.
Maybe, I mean, yeah, they probably, they probably have some good prospects, you know? It, it all depends if they can get it signed, you know? If, if it's a company that's multinational and they needed to fly people in, you know, it could get delayed because of that, if they can't get people in until the summer. But who knows? I'll see if I can find out.
Thank you. Motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second? All in favor of adjournment? Again?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, excuse me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Good night, everybody. Good night, evening.